Seriously.
It looks really tempting.
Yeah.
You should do it.
Find your time because you never know what will happen, right? So then you can come sit here and be like, see, just Lori is not coming.
Yeah, you're good. You're really like gun shy of this.
I know.
He asked to move. Sorry.
Because the board says.
It was all Brent.
Brent told me the first time I sat down, never ask where you can sit in this room.
So just when you're getting some confidence and seats like them.
Did you get a new laptop from the city or did you?
No, the problem with it was there was a little piece of debris in the charging port. That's what was promoting your car.
Biggie.
Because mine I have lived in all day at fifty-two percent. I don't maybe there's debris in my. It's like an old video game.
I know, we're really mixed up here.
It's alright, hold on. It's good.
People heard you were gonna be here.
Oh, I know, I'm thank you. Like thank the city.
Okay, and with that, it is five thirty. I will call this work session to order. Um, first, the moment we've all been waiting for, we have three new employees that we'd like to welcome to the city. So, um, you guys may have heard, I like to play two truths and a lie. Might be the dumbest thing you've ever heard of, but I find it to be a really good way to get to know our new employees. So that it's not the awkward like, ooh, what else do you want to know about me? Um, so if you're game and you don't have to be game, it won't come back, it won't be on your review. You will not not get a raise because if you decide not to, we'll just think poorly of you, but no pressure.
Wow.
Why don't we start by doing introductions, um, so that you can think that I'm the director of the group? Uh, my name is Courtney, we met up in San Diego, I'm the mayor of the city of Carver.
I'm Kristi Mock, city council.
I'm Mary Schmidt, uh, city engineer.
You know me, Brenda.
Lynn Schute, finance director.
Eric Perschmidt, I'm also at city council.
Aaron Smith, community development director.
Brent, we live.
Hopefully, uh, Reid was on city council.
Yeah, go ahead, Casey.
Casey Mosley, our with Summer Gate Development.
So Casey's here as an agenda item, but he doesn't know it yet, but we'll probably make him play two truths and a lie too. So, um, alright, um, just going in order of how you are listed, Calvin.
Right here.
Alright, um, do you want to play two truths and a lie?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay.
So, I grew up riding horses, I was a national champion in wrestling, and I used to ride bulls.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're all gonna raise the finger that we think is the lie.
You look like Toby Keith, I'm just.
That was supposed to be your lie.
I'm Toby Keith now.
Um, alright, it's between, oh, it's pretty well spread out, which one's the lie?
Bull riding.
Alright, okay.
I was really excited, I was like, oh, my god, he's a bull rider?
What type of national champion?
In wrestling, it was middle school.
Wow, very cool. Is there anything else you want to share, where you grew up?
Grew up in Jordan, wrestled and played football, grew up on a farm with cattle and horses, so that's about it.
So there's the horse riding part?
Yep.
Alright, well, welcome, so welcome, thanks for introducing me. Uh, Caleb.
I'm Caleb.
Welcome.
Um, I have a black lab named Lucy. Uh, I've never left the state of Minnesota, and my nickname in high school was Smiley.
Okay, what was the third one again?
I have a black lab named Lucy.
Really, you didn't seem smile after you said it?
No, I did, but everything, there's gonna be maybe something else.
Okay. Okay, um, not many people think number two is true.
It's number two.
Alright. Alright, um, how about you, Caleb, where'd you grow up, where'd you?
Newell.
Okay.
Yep.
Ah, do you know the Beusmans, Aaron Beusman? Okay, maybe not.
No.
She's in New York. Um, alright, what brought you up to the cities?
Uh, my girlfriend's from Columbia, so.
Fantastic, awesome, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, alright, is going last like the worst thing, are you super nervous now? No, great, okay. Uh, do you want to play two truths and a lie?
Yeah.
Go.
Uh, first off, my name is Matt Lenzin, um, two truths and a lie, spent my entire life here in Carver County. Went to Canada fishing and.
What was number two, went what fishing?
Went to Canada fishing.
Oh, okay.
Been to New York.
Alright, very clearly, literally, oh, Reed thinks you've been to New York, but the rest of us don't.
Poker player.
Poker is fun.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it's number three.
Alright, how about you, Matt? You're from here.
Yeah, Carver County.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jayden.
I'm on a farm just five minutes west of here, around two twelve.
Fantastic.
Cool.
Welcome, welcome, um, it's great to have you guys all here. We're gonna go over the rest of our meeting, you are welcome to stay to learn about Summer Gate and the strategic plan, but you are also welcome and more, often than not, folks leave at this point, so. You do, but welcome to the city of Carver.
Thanks, guys.
Nice to meet everyone.
Alright, uh, we've got the city managers for the party.
Uh, good evening, mayor council, just a couple, uh, items to update you on. Uh, the team met today, the flood response team to do a follow-up from the twenty twenty-four flood events. Uh, we've created kind of an outline of some to-dos, but, uh, I would say within the next couple of months we'll have some. We're gonna try to create kind of like a mini-plan, if you will, so that if everyone around the table wasn't here for the next flood event, someone could pick it up and say, okay, this is what they do, and these are the triggers. Um, we, but we also want to make it simple enough where you wouldn't have to, you know, read ten to fifteen pages to get the idea. And the hope is that it could be easily accessible, that a member of the community could look at it and feel pretty secure and, okay, this is the process that they use. With the other understanding that the more people are involved and are aware of the plan, the less anxieties that go along with an already tense situation. Uh, second is, at our last work session, we talked about the two twelve sanitary trunk line. Uh, we need to get underneath two twelve and then bring that line to Levi Griffin Road. Uh, we're gonna include that at the trunk fee, we, um, had Northland Securities look at that, and that doesn't change at all the trunk line fee, at least preliminarily, that we were planning for twenty twenty-five. Uh, so those numbers stay the same. Uh, Lynn is gonna be, uh, presenting an ordinance, more than likely on the consent and general, as the council wants to, uh, to pull it off. There's, uh, we need to adjust our, or we'd like to adjust our assessment fees for the administrative portion of assessing fees for unpaid utility bills and other charges from twenty-five to forty dollars, I believe.
Twenty dollars to forty-five dollars.
Twenty to forty-five dollars just to cover our costs. Southern Valley Alliance.
That would be for the current year, not the.
Correct, correct. Uh, Southern Valley Alliance is gonna be presenting at your next regular meeting on October seventh. Uh, Les Schwab, United Properties, and Carver Oaks are all planned to be, uh, have land use items at your October seventh meeting. Les Schwab is the tire retail establishment in Carver Commons. Uh, United Properties is doing a final plat in conjunction with that project. And then Carver Oaks is the senior, uh, affordable project adjacent to Carver Place at Carver Crossing. One of the items that you're in, uh, kind of a pretty routine basis is getting questions and comments on it, is the Les Schwab related to, you know, why did the city pick a tire auto place? Um, and Aaron's been doing a good job of following up on this, I think, uh, if the council can think of some ways that you think we could better communicate that on a kind of a mass scale. The example that I've used with some residents when asked is that, uh, when you move into a neighborhood, all the homes are, uh, in a traditional sense, zoned single families, so. You know it's gonna be a house, but you don't know what family's gonna move next to you, and so the same goes for Carver Commons, where we know there're gonna be retail establishments or service establishments. But we don't, in the same way that I don't get to choose who my neighbor is, the city doesn't get to choose with that degree of specificity, whether it's a tire place, a liquor store, um, a hair salon, et cetera. There are bigger things that you can do zoning-wise, and that's something that planning commission is looking at, but as Carver Commons sits, um, the city is not in a position to pick, you know. You know, either kind of type of retailer to that degree, but also like a brand name, so like the example I have seen Aaron uses. It might be a gas station, but we don't get to decide whether it's Quip Trip or Holiday. It could be a grocer, but we don't get to decide whether it's Walmart or Target, and, um, some folks, um, just because we live it every, every day. Or kind of get the sense that they like to be able to vote for like one brand over the other, one type of retailer over the other, and so I think. The more that we can create space for those conversations, uh, for education purposes and for, I think, uh, clarity, the better off we'll be.
You know how much I like your, um, illustrations and that kind of, and your analogies, um, but I would argue that we should just be more direct, the city doesn't get to pick. We have zoning guidelines, but we don't have a dartboard in the back of city hall that we throw darts at to say what's gonna be the next developer. We are dependent on, we have the business plan, who is the capital, and who wants to be in the city of Carver. We do have guide rails that say what kind of businesses can be in the zoning district, but like, I just, and the folks, and I think I've only gotten a couple of emails on this topic, I haven't really clear of, we don't get to choose, as long as it's a. Acceptable use within the zoning district, which I think is the language, right? Like, we can't say no to Hometown Bank, but yes to the next steps or anything that's up there, or anything that's in any of our zoning districts.
Correct.
I agree, Courtney, I think it's, that is the only message there is, right? We don't get to control it, we've set it up, we have our guidelines, and then if they fall within that, it's the three things you said, if you have the money, if you have the want, and the will to be here, and we can't, there's nothing else.
Right, do we say what we can do? Do we say, what we can do is ensure that the developer reads codes for instance, uh, noise standards, something that was important, important to everyone on this. So I'd maybe throw in what we can do too, so the question is, well, what does city council do then? So.
Also agree, yeah, yeah.
Do you?
As long as it's not two truths and a lie.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that overview of it is great.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Uh, and then, uh, Kevin reviewing, so there was a question related to our administration ordinance that I was looking at on the phone, that we have some, uh, kind of old language in our, the city code related to like council meetings, it says we, we meet at church by the river and. Just some other kind of cleanup things that I'm working with the city attorney on that I hope to have in front of you later this fall, either October or November. Um, this is kind of a bigger FYI, as you know, we're working on trying to present the council with some options for a future water treatment plan and public services, uh, shop, um, kind of land options later this fall. And so I'm doing so, I'm reaching out to real estate agents and property owners, uh, getting a sense of if the property's available and at what price, and kind of in the spirit of Carver County, just knowing how things go, sometimes people will start talking about all the city contact and media about. This and this property, just wanted to let you know that we're out there, we're talking to people, uh, with the full understanding that, uh, any decisions related to making an offer, um, and what property that ends up being is at this whole discretion of the city council, but. I don't, as we've ramped up, I am sure people are gonna start talking or saying that the city asked if this is available, so know that we're out there. Um, the state historic preservation office is having their annual conference in September, and we were fortunate, two years in a row, Natalie Myers submitted a scholarship application. And so Sandra Kelly from the HPC is going to that in Red Wing, I believe they're in Red Wings, or is it Mankato?
I think it was.
Mankato was last year. No?
I don't. He's going somewhere.
He's going somewhere.
Southern Missouri, got it.
And then, uh, last thing, I'm gonna be attending the International City County Management Association Conference from Saturday to Wednesday this weekend, Pittsburgh, so I'll be available then. So if you need someone, contact me as you would normally.
That's good, thank you. Um, any council requests? Who's making eye contact? Okay, um, moving on to item number five, Summer Gate Development Concept and Southwest Infrastructure Development Project, Smith.
Thank you. Alright, so we've been talking about this topic for a while, so I don't know, just a quick refresher in case someone is tuning in, uh, seeing this information for the first time, and then I'll pass it over to PC, who's here with Summer Gate. So we've been focusing pretty heavily on the south growth area, south of city limits, so the orange and blue spot kind of in the center is Mueller's Pit, so south of the bluff, south of recurrent city limits. It's been an area that we've identified as a large growth area for a single-family residential, and knowing that Summer Gate owns quite a bit of property or has partners in this area, it's been something we've been thinking about a lot recently, as we think about our long-term financial plan, building permits, et cetera. So, we've been thinking also a lot about our lot inventory, so we're getting pretty low in our developments that are currently in Carver, so Timber Creek is selling faster than Lennar thought it would, faster than we thought it would, which is great. But we're going to come up to probably needing some more residential lots here pretty soon, so we also have Brookview and the Preserve, but we also have some implications in our ten-year financial plan, so we need to be able to support those building permit numbers with lots available, so. Thinking about the three projects that we have, they don't add up to much compared to the numbers that we're thinking about for permits. So we are trying to be really proactive, think about different areas that we can grow, think about how we can get there to reach a successful project. So, the project scope is generally the pink area, so it's a really large space that we've been thinking about potential development in this entire space, so again, south and west of our current city limits, but there are some implications with infrastructure that we need to think about, so. There's a city portion which is in yellow, and then red, which we've determined is utility extension that we need to get from the bluffs down to this growth area. So on the screen now are the times that we have talked about this, so we were pretty heavy in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, thinking about different options, we explored moving north, we explored moving south, got a bunch of feedback from the city council. And then most recently, at the June seventeenth meeting, we had Northland Security here to talk through the trunk charges, which end up being eighteen hundred dollars for the water truck charge, fifteen hundred for the sewer trunk charge. So what that means is that each lot that is platted will be required to pay those two fees, which will allow us to extend utilities not only to this area, but moving forward in the future. We'll continue to collect that fee that will allow the city to use the money for projects to get utilities to other places in town or in our future growth area. So those are two important numbers that Northland presented at the June seventeenth meeting. We've already started talking about those numbers a lot with anyone who will listen to us, just to let people know that we're moving forward in this process, most likely, that it's something that a developer might see starting in twenty twenty-five, just so we can't have someone come in and say, you never told me, what are you talking about? So, although it's not set in stone, yeah, we are talking about it often with a lot of people. Also, at the June seventeenth meeting, we had some really general information from Summer Gate, the council requested some additional information, we figured who better than Casey to come in and talk a little bit more about the Summer Gate project. So, this was the general map that you saw at the June seventeenth meeting, uh, Casey can probably add a lot more narrative to this, but just letting us know that there are willing partners in the area and Summer Gate continues to work on the project. It likely will be large-scale, so it will require several planning processes, including an AUAR annexation, rezoning, plating, so it'll be a lot of steps, but not steps that we don't take fairly often in Carver through development. So, Casey, I'm gonna pass it over to you if you wanna start your update.
Sure, I appreciate everybody, uh, letting me come in and talk a little bit about our project. Uh, yeah, we've been waiting a few years to kind of work this out and figure out a plan, how to get sewer and water, or mostly sewer, and maybe a good road down to where we're at, and, uh.
I'm gonna bring up the slides, but we're in the. Continue on.
Anyway, uh, I think everybody kind of knows, she kind of highlighted the general area of the, of the project, and right now, we have identified about a thousand acres of land down there that we're working with multiple different landowners. We have about almost five hundred acres already, uh, under agreement, and we're hoping to add more to that. Yeah. So I'm sure if you kind of read this, it's, uh, just some generic information about, you know, about us, and then we, we're calling the project Summerfield, if you were to check out our website, a lot of our projects have a word "summer" in it, so. I don't wanna. But, uh, yeah, the, the project area, uh, identified, and you can kind of see the roundabout that's proposed by the county or the future roundabout. Uh, and that's, uh, kind of what Aaron was talking about, about bringing services, the current plan would be to bring services to the roundabout, uh, once the roundabout and the, and the road get upgraded, which maybe, uh, these guys will be able to elaborate a little bit on, I don't know if there's anything happening with that yet. Uh, that'll really kind of determine the timeline of how we move ahead. Uh, I mean, we could theoretically, if the sewer was there, things were there, we could go as early as next year, but we would be skipping, uh, I mean, we could start something next year, but the reality is, for the greater project, uh, there's a lot longer approval process that would occur, and Aaron would. Probably elaborate on that a lot more than I would want to. Uh, but what you're seeing here is a proposed, uh, I, I want to emphasize that this is a concept. Obviously, I haven't sat here with staff and worked out the exact road locations or anything, uh, but, uh, we use Westwood, uh, as our engineering firm, and they've done a lot of different master plans and worked with a lot of different communities on, on picking roads, and we've done a lot of. Even these roads have a, a lot of thought put into them, uh, mainly because they either skirt existing landowners who are trying to avoid moving their businesses, or, um, make, uh, long-term connections or connectivity type things that, that'll impact the layout of the property. Uh, but we.
I, I think it might help Casey for the council, so as we talked about this, or not, even though Casey's given a nice background on the housing, the, really, the kind of the, um, the main point or the primary reason that Casey's here tonight is about the need for infrastructure. And the reason we started talking about trunk fees is that the water and sewer connection to bring to the Summerfield property is, is so large, it's a gap in our system, and to place that gap in our system on one development makes. A project like Casey's proposing, or at least that, those first couple of phases, the capital is up there, per forma, and so really, um, in most cases, you'd find a developer saying, oh, another thirty-three hundred dollar, thirty-three hundred dollars in fees, you know, not to be supportive, and what we wanted to do was bring up Casey and talk about. Casey and their team has been advocating for, you know, a more holistic approach, I would call it, to, uh, charging these fees off, rather than making the first development who's in pay for the entire system and then have, frankly, you know, um, decades worth of, of other developments benefiting from an investment that the first person made. Can you expand on that a little bit, Casey?
God, he said so well. What he said, or, but, uh, yeah, I mean, that's it, and, and obviously, uh, when I show a thousand acres, not every person's gonna say yes, and not every single person is gonna be involved in the project. Uh, so when he talks about, uh, whatever the cost of that project is for, as a specific cost, there's some major, major infrastructure being put in, uh, and honestly, we've been working with staff for about at least ten years now, talking about different ways, how do we do it, how could it be done? Uh, and nothing's cheaper than it was ten years ago, so it was a problem ten years ago, and if anything, it's only gotten bigger, uh, as things have inflated in cost. Uh, and the, the biggest part is to come up with a plan that, that the staff and, and the engineering firm have kind of come up with now, is how do we come up with an infrastructure plan that everybody shares in, because it's not just one particular landowner that's involved. There's gonna be, you know, maybe forty landowners over time, maybe fifty, I, I don't know exactly how that all connects, uh, but there's gonna be thousands of acres impacted, and we might only be a portion of it. And how do we get everybody to share in that cost, because if, if it's fair and everybody shares equally, then everybody's on the same playing field, everybody can, can compete with each other, and the fair market will work. But if we have a scenario where the first guy has to pay, you know, seven million bucks to open the door, and then anybody who's standing next door gets a free ride, then that guy's, it's impossible for that guy to make it financially.
And it only triggers when someone wants to develop their property, if someone remained in the township, if you will, unsuared, they're not impacted by this, it's only if they've sold to a development and wanted access to water and sewer, then they kind of, this is their entry fee to get access. On top of all the other fees and services that, uh, go along with that development.
And the proposed fee is a, is a per-unit fee, so, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, a per-unit fee is only paid if someone's platted their property, and they've signed a development agreement, and now they're paying that fee. So, I mean, like you said, it's not gonna be just any landowner out there, it's gonna be people who have gone and, we advanced into the development process.
Wouldn't we're, just to interrupt if you don't mind, while we're talking about that development process and how these fees won't affect the existing landowners, I know the answer is question, but sometimes I like to have folks say it, so that the tens and tens of people who are watching this video later on will understand, but if there's somebody who's surprised by this. And says, my house is in that area, I just moved here, or I'm really comfortable in my home, can you talk about how that process will potentially not affect them?
Well, I mean, the, the truth is, we've identified some of the larger parcels, uh, that would be the least impactful to the fewest amount of people directly. Uh, we've tried to avoid areas where there's, uh, two acre and five acre homesteads. Uh, we've focused on areas that are gonna be, uh, that have the most upland acres or areas that aren't wetlands, aren't bluff areas. So, uh, even though they're inside the box, or there is, you know, Carver Creek and some of the bluff areas, obviously, we're not gonna develop in a bluff, uh, bluff ordinances and things that require that. Uh, but anybody inside this, uh, inside this box, we just identified a box, uh, mainly because we kind of worked with some of the city's long-term plans and said, well, here's the long-term plan, let's look inside that box. Uh, and some of the people I haven't even made connections with, I've made attempts, just have made a connection with, and maybe this, this kind of thing would help.
Sure.
Uh, that, that's kind of the case, but almost all the larger landowners, uh, were involved, you know, twenty years ago with a project that was gonna happen, and they're interested at some level of doing, doing the project again.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it from the side of folks who might not want to sell.
Yeah, and if they don't want to sell, they just don't have to, they say no.
Nobody's coming after your house, you can stay there.
No.
For as long as you'd like.
Yeah, for sure.
And annexation and Carver, the property owner positions us, we don't go to them to say, we're ready, you have to come into the city now, it's typically when a property owner is willing to sell, they're working with a developer, and then the annexation also starts.
Short development is never forced.
Correct. I have a, um, so if I'm looking at your, what's likely your first phase is obviously where that roundabout is, um, you said you have, this, this area that we have on the map is about a thousand acres, but you own about five hundred right now, is that correct?
Uh, we own.
Or a hundred acres.
Yeah, we, we own a couple hundred acres, uh, and we have additional acres, close to five hundred acres, yes.
Okay, when you say, we have a couple hundred acres, but, so do you have five hundred acres, do you have two hundred acres?
Well, we, we own.
Okay.
Two hundred acres, we have three hundred additional acres we have, we're contracted with.
You're contracted with, okay. Um, so then, when I'm looking at this map, and obviously that was your entry point, and we go back to the larger map, how many of those are pieced together? Like, where's your, do you have big gaps in here, are you gonna be able to?
I can't identify particular landowners right now, uh, because that would create a problem for me, because there's random people in here, and there's people on the internet, uh, I'm not gonna create a competitive disadvantage for myself. But I can tell you that the acres that I do have all connect.
Okay, okay.
And that's actually what is driving most of our development, uh, communications with people is, if this person says yes, now I can talk to the next person, and if that person says yes, I can talk to that person. So some of the people who may not have been contacted or haven't connected with someone, it's simply I, until I get the person in front of them to say they want to be involved, I can't.
So the reason I'm asking, and this is more about the city and the council, is that if we have a bunch of parcels that are not connected, and we're gonna go through this, and we're gonna possibly fund that infrastructure all the way down there, the problem is, is I don't want to have us as a council decide to do that, and then get one small piece of development, and then they're landlocked, and they can't go any further, because now we've spent a whole lot of money. Because now we've spent a whole lot of money that isn't going to get developed as fast, because we've got gaps between what's owned and what's not. What's privately owned and what's owned by Summerfield.
Sure.
Well, frankly, who owns a property is on county tax records, where, I mean, that's good, Casey said it's contiguous, so that's not a concern on the staff side, always.
And I'll also add that the trunk area charge is citywide. So if we start a project in another area, we'll start collecting those funds, no matter where the permit comes in during the plotting process.
Which is, Erin brings up a really good point. That's a major strategy shift in how we presented, because initially, we just looked at this area, but as we know now, there are gaps community-wide, and so both from a kind of practicality on infrastructure construction and this who pays, this is more of a holistic approach. The other thing that's significant is what Erin Schmitz could work, the county was going to put turn lanes in on that 40 and 11 going to Jordan. They paused understanding that we would be coming in potentially with the infrastructure project, so if we can make this all work, these projects would align infrastructure and new roundabout, rather than putting in turn lanes and then ripping those out a year or two later. So, you know, in a perfect scenario, you know, this is something maybe the engineer's office plans, in 2025, we probably have construction in the spring of '26.
Yeah, yeah, 2025 will be a planned development year. There's other stuff that has to come ahead of construction, you know, utility relocates and such at the roundabout, so there's a large gas man that has to get rerouted. So 2025 will be a planning year, for sure.
But the county's aware of?
Yep.
The scheduling?
Yes.
Teams that kind of dovetail with...
That's the expectation, that's how we're communicating with the other landowners we're talking to. Project begins in '26, unless, like you said, unless something weird had happened and allowed it to move out, and we didn't anticipate that.
And that aligns, sorry, what Carver County's plans for JCP?
Yep, I've updated them maybe a month or two ago, and they're still on board for a schedule that would be in that.
Okay, and is there a plan just that roundabout, or Phase 2 of JCP in its entirety?
It's not like the full build-out of Phase 2, it's, there's some work, like shouldering work and such, but it's not like the full, like, wide project.
And they don't have it going all the way up to north, it's just an intersection.
Roughly, in just that area, okay. It sounds like we could make the stars aligned, as far as time goes. Erin, on your other slide that you had, the trunk fees, can you say what those were? Or the second one?
1,500 and 1,800, so 3,300 total.
Okay, and what are they now?
Zero.
Zero. This is separate from second whack. So second whack is paid at building permit. Trunk fees will be paid when they plat that development.
Okay, so this 3,300 just rise, so this 300 gets, and any new home that comes in is helping pay for that trunk fee, so we've got?
Any new home that's platted.
Right, sure. So like Timber Creek is fully platted, so they won't pay that fee, but anyone coming into this project or a new project starting 2025, that class would be required to pay.
Okay. Do you see them being pushed back from our older developers who are coming into different areas of town?
No, we've been really open, that we're thinking about this. We also are not the first community to do it. Trunk charges are pretty common throughout Carver County. So when you mentioned it, most developers were like, yep, okay, we know that game.
Tell me a couple towns in Carver County, just so I have it in my head.
Victoria, Waconia, those are the two off the top of my head that I can say confidently.
Okay, thanks.
I can tell you, as a developer, usually we just want to know well in advance, so we know. So I mean, we usually are working on something before we bring it to the city, 12 to 18 months before you guys ever really know, maybe just us superficially calling and asking about it. So we got to know what the costs are, because that's how we negotiate with landowners. If they don't go in, then they just, it makes it so much easier.
I guess I have a question for Lynn. If we do decide to go forward on the financing side, right, the city would obviously not have the $3 million in cash, right? So we'd have to bond, and then the fees are basically dedicated for the bond repayment interest, right? That's basically how we calculated, or rough calculations, right?
Yep, we have it planned that way right now in our long-term financial plan.
Okay. So based on kind of this schedule, so we, when you see the draft 2025, B schedule will show trunk charges for water and sewer, so you would be conceptually then collecting on those fees for all of '25 and all of '26 before you actually expend?
If a project plants.
If a project plants.
Is the east side of 40, is that Scott County? Or is that Carver?
No, it's a...
It is a Carver County, okay. It's not Scottville River?
Yep.
Okay. Just here, it's always on, you know, from one side. Erin?
You know, we've talked about this a number of times. This infrastructure build is the, we're going to bet on Carver and the success of Carver and the development of Carver. So we've talked about this. All I really see here is that we have a project that's more imminent than it was when I first heard about this, and we've talked about those, the trunk charges. We talked about equalizing it, so that one developer didn't pay more than another. I think that's a good idea. So no, I don't have any questions, I'm just really excited about the potential for the development.
And to your question on the sides, this is the area that's in, like, contemplated in our comprehensive plan. Frankly, the east side, there's a lot of US fish and wildlife in Minnesota Valley Nature Reserve or something like that. But fundamentally, once infrastructure gets brought to the intersection, you can extend...
Okay.
This is, just going back a couple chapters, this is essentially the result of when the Carver Bluffs neighborhood was developed, utilities weren't extended, trunked utilities all the way to the property line. So eventually, this was going to happen, because they brought lines to service Carver Bluffs West, which is like Overlook Drive and some of those areas with what would be like size at, you know, just a regular residential neighborhood. And you really need to have a pipe that can handle a trunk service of multiple neighborhoods. But at that time, based on whatever circumstances, it was, I'm sure, more affordable to the developer. The city was probably pretty hungry for housing at the time, but it did create the situation where that gap needs to be filled in some shape or form.
Another question for Erin, just curious, this roundabout at JCP and County Road 11, that's still the right solution with all the development? And I ask that as a resident leaving my neighborhood, whereas, you know, I feel like how dare I have the audacity to try to leave my neighborhood when traffic is coming up Jordan?
Sure.
Is a roundabout still the right solution for that much traffic?
So the county did a traffic study, they completed a full traffic report on that, and that's still their, kind of their base option, is a roundabout based on the traffic projections.
The current traffic projections.
Or what future, future goals.
Are you actually looking at all of this?
Yeah. Full build-up.
Oh. Seriously, I know you're saying, go that way in the morning.
They did, they did that in, yeah, 2015 or 16 with WSB.
It was connected to, at one point, we were working with the school district, where the school's located now. At one point, we were looking at putting a school that were on the property, we identified here. We were like, option A, C, D, something, whatever, on the school's list, and they had to have a traffic study to kind of figure it out.
Was that before or after 212 was redone?
Yeah, way after, 2015, way after.
Oh, for when the schools stopped?
Yeah, they had, essentially what you see here is what was fed into the program. I mean, you know, pretending to be an engineer for a second, like, the run, like, if engineers have a choice on roundabout or signal, they choose a roundabout, just because of the safety and the, it takes down the degree of significant accidents, like T-bones, et cetera, way down.
Yep.
I get that perfectly.
That's exactly correct. So yeah, but...
Two for two.
To your point, we can refer to that when we get to that, but I asked them about that recently, and they still reference that traffic study as applicable, so.
Well, you can't miss second gear leaving the neighborhood, or you're going to get mowed over by a truck.
That might, this might help you, though, it would slow them way down, probably.
Pardon?
Like, coming out here.
This will slow all the traffic down?
Yeah.
Unless they really got it.
Casey, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
You've heard so much about Casey from Summerfield. It's like you're this amazing, like, mythical creature, so thanks again for coming and having us.
Sure, no problem. Any questions, just to...
Hold on a second, hold on a second. So I just wanted to say, like, I am on board for the trunk fees. I think the making them universal really makes sense to level the playing field between communities to the south, communities to the north in our community. But I really want to make sure that, you know, we've talked about the trunk fees before and the benefit of it. The purpose tonight of having Casey here is to talk about his development, because I think our general consensus, at the risk of putting words in your mouth, is trunk fees, yes, but this is a gamble, and, you know, like, how do we know that we're actually going to have a development? So with Casey here, I want to make sure that we're taking advantage of that and asking, and I want to make sure that you guys are getting from him what you need. Don't all go at once.
Well, I mean, I think you just summed up earlier, right? With if we didn't put in the trunk fee and supply the infrastructure on a community basis, there is no way this development could go forward, right?
No, it's been, that way for 10 plus, 15 years.
Sure. So yeah, decision is develop or not, so I mean, I think it's pretty obvious that we need to go forward.
I've already stated that I'm betting a future.
And you said you have no more questions. I just want to make sure we have all our questions. This seems like it's really going to happen, and I appreciate you sharing, I know there's a little bit of risk in that you're trying to hold some cars closer to the rest, but I appreciate you sharing and kind of showing us to make it a little bit more tangible with the details. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You two are welcome to stay for the rest of the evening, if you would like. We've got another meeting tomorrow, but I'll do you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. I'm going to do our strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mary Council. So for a quarterly review of our strategic plan, just wanted to highlight some work that Lyns did on the finance side, updated, purchased some relatively inexpensive CIP software. Can I, I know we didn't talk about this, can you give the council just a brief overview of that software, and what it does, and how it relates to potentially increasing our bond rating?
Sure, so one of the comments, when we were rated by Standard and Poor's, was the fact that we didn't have kind of an organized CIP program, so...
What's a CIP?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, so I was able to secure a program called Planet, and so they've, since I've used it in a previous position of mine, it's now a cloud-based program. And so you can put all, every piece of equipment or infrastructure in this program, and then how you are planning on funding it. So it's kind of, it's kind of nice, and then you can run different reports. You can run it based on department, you can run it based on, like, fund, so like, if you wanted to run it based on municipal building fund, or if you wanted to run it on the water fund. So there's a lot more reporting that you can do, and then you can also run like pie charts and different things like that, so. And then you can see, like, for instance, on the street maintenance fund, you can see all of your projects, how they're being funded with the state aid and the levy, and then you can see where you go negative, if you go negative.
So I thought we did have a CIP, is this, the rating agency is want more vision into it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So basically, we were keeping it basically just in Excel.
Got it.
And this is just a more robust system that just shows it in more of an organized way.
So it's not, it's not coaching on having the plan, we have the plan.
Right.
It's how visible and transparent it is. Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you, Lyn. And then another update, so we're changing the strategy, as you know, one of the strategic condition is, is do a comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance, which the planning commission has been working on, and connecting with Erin, or changing the strategy of, rather than doing it like all at once, because it's such a massive document that the planning commission is working on, we're going to be taking it a little bit more in pieces. And one of the, I would call like maybe a flagship kind of strategy, is potentially looking at a different zoning district as it relates to commercial. And so I just asked Erin if she could just give a little bit of a preview of some of the conversations the planning commission has had on, this is very big.
Just a drag.
On limited commercial or gateway commercial, I think is what we're taking.
So we've been talking a lot, as we've seen more commercial development in the past couple years, about our commercial zoning districts. So downtown, we have our central business district, and then the other red on the map, or the other commercial spaces, we've used our freeway commercial district. And as you can see, they're not always next to the freeway. So we've struggled a little bit to find a commercial zoning district that works in every area, so our plan right now is to add a couple more. So we would have the downtown central business district, we would have freeway commercials, so we'd keep that same district, but focus it along Highway 212, keep it along a freeway, a general commercial district, and then what we're calling a gateway commercial district. So through a couple recent projects and a lot of the branding work that we've done, we've heard from residents, the planning commission, the city council, how important some of the gateways at Carver are. So thinking about the wayfinding work that we've done, and the JCP project, and thinking about Main Street, like, how we can make it feel like you're in Carver and preserving some of the areas. Be mindful about the type of development, what development looks like on some key corridors when you're coming to town, feels really important right now. So thinking about, we've been calling it gateway commercial, the planning commission looked at this at their August 15 meeting, they're seeing a second draft this Thursday at their next meeting. So we've moved through zoning code, we're through Section 50-70, and then we'll do one more review, and then I think we'll send it over to the city council, so you can check out the work that they've been doing, just to get some highlights of what we've been working on, but some samples of where this gateway commercial would fall. It's anything along a county road, so anything along County Road 11, County Road 43 eventually, so this is one property, it's the Opitin piece, is what we've called it for a long time. So Fleet Farm is the big red box that's on the map, goes along a property, and then Opitin. So we've seen a couple development proposals come through that have not ticked the boxes to be a commercial user, and then we've been thinking about it more exclusively as that gateway commercial user. So we would want something that the community would use, something that might look a little more enhanced than what our commercial district might look like, just so you can feel like you're coming into Carver, be more mindful about the types of users that would go on that site. So it's not just that one piece, it's all along County Road 11, so Carver Commons is another one with county frontage, and then a couple more areas in the compliance. So the yellow circles would use the gateway commercial if property is adjacent to a county road. So it wouldn't be for any commercial development, we'd have some different districts, but we want to be really mindful about some of these areas that feel consequential to the type of development that goes in, how it looks, how it operates, how it serves our community specifically. So again, the planning commission is working on it, but just wanted to give you a little teaser that it's something that you'll be seeing soon.
I have a question for you. So we just talked about how we can't control who comes into our spaces. This sounds the opposite of that. Tell me how it's not.
So we can't control who the end user is, but we can control the type. So we could say that in these areas, we want retail that would be accessed by the community with enhanced walking trails, so making it, attempting to make it more walkable. So this district would just be a little bit more specific, it still would be commercial, but there might be different users than what our freeway commercial. So freeway commercial, I think about something like a car dealership, might go along Highway 212.
Fleet Farm.
Freeway commercial, Fleet Farm, yes, just some of those larger users that just operate a little bit differently, so we would want something, potentially a little smaller scale, that people could use on a day-to-day basis for people in our community specifically. So like an additional gas station or a truck stop along any of those properties, typically for people passing through the community, and it could be on a pretty consequential corner for us, so trying to dial in a little bit the commercial users to make them more neighborhood, more community scaled.
I have a question too. So I think what I hear you saying, I'm just looking for confirmation, is that we can try to modify the type of business in those areas, which you just confirmed, but also more of an enhanced style, if you will?
Correct. Yep, so building materials could be different, so we could enhance the building materials that would be required, so it might need to be stone, or part of it needs to, 90% of it needs to be hardyboard with stone accents. We could dial in... We could dial in on design standards a little bit more. And I don't want to do that across the whole community because not every business is able to accomplish those things and it's not a product that they create. But I just, we've been wanting to be more mindful of some really specific locations.
Okay, thank you.
And specifically, is it just abiding the county road, right? So if we went back to the one along 212, right, the one, the circled one would be gateway, but the one next to it would not because that's not on the county road.
Yep, so it would be, in our conplan, it's red, which is commercial. So it could go freeway commercial, it could go general commercial. Gateway will just be adjacent to county roads, and then the downtown is our central business district. So we would never rezone one of these properties as central business district because it's not part of that district. But there will be some increased options as to the type of product we might see there depending on the zoning.
And then like, again, we're, we're still allowing it. If another business didn't fit in the gateway commercial, it could go in the regular commercial or the creative commercial zone. So we're not prohibiting it in the city. It's just that specific location, we want a more stringent use or aesthetic standards.
Okay. If the planning commission and council agree.
Oh, yeah, for the proposal, yes.
So does updating the zoning guidelines apply to the existing United property that is yet undeveloped, the south of that?
It was, so that it's freeway commercial right now. The city council and planning commission could reserve the right to rezone the property. I would say with United properties, how closely we're working with them, that would be a big conversation that we all would need to have. So I don't want to say, yes, for sure, we can do it, no, we can't. Just, we don't know all of their plans right now, so I wouldn't want to kill a deal that they're working on.
I understand, that's why I asked. Okay.
Have any answer to any questions on other updates or initiatives that you want to ask about?
Questions?
And since we got a little, with the time, just a couple of pieces. I know the Marion Junction Trail project groundbreaking is later this week, tomorrow. We still don't have a date, because construction dates start from Scott County. So if you hear anything, let me know.
What's holding up? We were worried about ski boat days, maybe for fireworks.
Yeah, they are saying that they're waiting for permit approvals from agencies. Told them that we need at least a week's notice to shut down Riverside Park.
That's a bummer. I had asked to have a, well, I guess we'll still get a week's notice, but I want to be able to post some signage that says Riverside Park will close starting in whatever October of 2024, so that folks know. Because I hate surprises. I understand why others do too, so I don't want it to be a surprise of anybody who goes down there regularly.
And then the second thing is where Eric Menth and I are working, we're going to have a privacy fence installed around the Oak Street lift station. So getting pricing for that. But it's been kind of a, it's adjacent to our historic district, and we think it'll help some neighborhood. And I'll kind of out of sight, out of mind if you see a nice fence rather than well, sanitary sewer lift station. Eric was good because we don't want to put a fence up and then have it be in the way, you know, when there's an emergency. Still have to be able to do work on the site, so.
So it's going to just go more around the lift station and not that entire property?
Correct.
Great. Sounds good.
Councilwoman Rissiter just sent me a text that she's not going to be able to make the regular reading, so.
All right.
We've got a little extra time. Can we talk about pilings?
That's how the agenda for the Raymond meeting.
You're excited about this? So is Aaron. So is Aaron.
All right, well, we have to save it for the regular meeting.
In the news business, we called that a teaser.
All right.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned for second o'clock. We will talk about that.
Unless anybody has anything else for our work session, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion, council member. Well, second, second council member, mark all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion passes.
Well, now what do we do? We can have this question.
There's connect four out there too, if you, you're so inclined.
Eric, you're going down.
Challenge. Extended challenge.
Then it got weird. I don't think you're concealing it.